Lawrence, excuse.
Yeah, she's on vacation.
No, I'm getting an appraisal. I think we're all going to the sites.
Somewhere warm. She's going back somewhere warm.
She was definitely headed somewhere warm.
Friday, we'll see.
I'm going to start doing Kathy, not the hard time. She calls in for all of our meetings. I'm going to ask her if it's like something required. We need to call in all of her meetings.
I know.
I know. I know.
I'm in the mercy sometimes. Yeah, I was watching your meeting the other day.
Yeah, they watched the recordings. I'm like, I don't have time for that. Ready? Okay, I want to call this meeting to order. Thanks, everybody. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Megan.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Anthony Hughes, dresser.
Here.
All right, very good. Any agenda changes, additions or deletions? All right, we'll jump right into it. So we have guest speaker, Rosemary. You want to come on up? I'll tee this one up a little bit. Rosemary Graham is with Allen County and she works with the Resource Recovery Center. I also happen to have a chance to know Rosemary through all the COVID clinics. She basically through the Health and Human Services, basically her health department, was one of the main leads on all the COVID clinics that happened. So before you even get started, thank you so much for your time on that. I mean, I know it took a lot from all of you. So thank you so much. So with the Recycling Committee, we have the last two years really been focusing, obviously, on recycling and trying to improve our services for our constituents. And we've had several discussions with Rosemary. But this latest is around an opportunity for us to consider as a municipality, to consider a surcharge to be added to the ballot in November. And this basically comes, is only allowable when the county commission basically says to us, hey, municipality, you can put this on the ballot if you want. So a little bit of information, where we are right now with the city of Sagittuck, we're on a single hauler contract for waste and recycling. We have once a month pickup on our recycling. Our contract is good until April of next year. What we don't have included in our contract is any more often than once a month, nor do we have included in our contract Household Hazardous Waste Day. As we know, last year, we had a really successful Household Hazardous Waste Day. And we're going to have another one this year again. Stay tuned on that one. So when this opportunity came forward from Rosemary about the possibility of a surcharge, I wanted to make sure that we, at least as a council, were aware of this opportunity. We may not jump on it, but it's something to keep in mind, especially as we get near to renewing or considering a renewal of our contract with Republic Services or with a solid waste contractor. So with that, I'll hand it over to Rosemary. We've had a number of discussions. I've sent a lot of questions her way, so I hope that that's helped. I asked her to keep this to about 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll do my best to keep it to 10 minutes. Yes, yes, that sounds great. Thank you for having me. I'm Rosemary Graham. I'm Yaling County Resource Recovery Coordinator. I've been in this position since 2017. And as indicated, every once in a while, the board offers for municipalities to join the program by placing this option for funding on the ballot for voters to consider. It is one opportunity, but they've come up in the past. And so they, you know, may come up in the future if it doesn't align with things right now. Just so you're aware of that. Also, just to make note, we do have a very good relationship with Republic Services. And your municipal coordinator, Jack Brown, he works with you and he works with me. I just got off the phone with him earlier today, actually. So there's ways to work together and provide like a continuity of service so your residents don't necessarily even see any interruptions. And, you know, he's very open to discussing things like increasing the frequency, if that could be achieved. So I heard this morning that it might be like around $20 a year that residents are kind of paying for recycling services. So, you know, maybe we could look potentially if we're collecting, if you're collecting $50 per resident, you know, something like 30, 35 for twice, twice a month rather than once a month. And that does occur in some of the municipalities that participate. So Jack's aware and he's very open to discussion, just so you're aware. You might want to connect with him as well for a little more information. But to jump into some of the questions that Garner sent me ahead of time, I responded and then I tossed them into a presentation. So go ahead into the next slide and we'll... So you have a single, what if you have a single hauler contract? Is that the first? Is that the first page? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so this kind of goes along with what one of the benefits to joining the program is as well. So the purpose of this funding mechanism is to offset the cost burden that you may be facing as a municipality to offer those services. Residents might be direct paying for curbside, but, you know, you don't necessarily have funding mechanisms for difficult to recycle materials like appliances, styrofoam collection center, collection for electronics, household hazardous waste. And that's a call I get frequently from residents in this area is household hazardous wastes. And I don't have a good option. Some of the difficult to recycle items, I can send them to pad notes. They have to pay out of pocket, but I don't really have a good option when they call and say, hey, what do I do with my gasoline from my boat? Or, you know, all these pesticides that I was putting on my lawn all summer. You know, I'm not going to be around. What do I do? I don't necessarily have a great option. So this would offset some of the costs associated with providing those services. It also offsets some of your staff time. So I would become your recycling coordinator. I would, you know, handle some of the day-to-day customer questions, inquiries, event planning, coordination, advertising, some of those. Yeah.
No, I'm just woo-hooing because I'm the event coordinator for Household Hazardous Waste Day right now.
So I would take that on. And then your staff could focus on other more important things. Thank you. And so we touched on this twice, twice monthly collection. That seems to be an area of interest. And I did not necessarily get down into the nuts and bolts with Republic, but we, you know, briefly touched on it and they're open to discussing it. We have four out of the 12 that have curbside collect at least twice a month. And so two of those are Door and Leighton. They contract with Arrow Waste, but the other are Wayland Township, which has two routes in the city of Wayland. And they both have twice monthly collection through Republic. So it certainly feels well.
Okay, thank you.
And who will we contract with? So we work with the municipalities, certainly. It's not just the county's decision, but we do follow the county's purchasing policy because our signature will be on any agreements. Because we'll be using funds that are held at the county. So our signature will be on the agreements. We have to follow our purchasing policy. So we try to go out for a bid. And if there's only one vendor, which is sometimes with recycling, that's the case, then we go ahead and proceed without, and that's built into our purchasing policy. So we can stick with Republic. And they're, you know, pretty easy of us to answer to any other option. So.
Okay.
Um, okay, does it apply to, does the $50 surcharge apply to curbside pickup only? And are there additional charges? So the $50, and we'll get into this a little bit more on the next slide, all the different services that that can be, that is used for. But it's not only curbside, so it's more than just curbside. And if there are additional charges, it is important to realize that if your expenditures exceed your revenue, which does happen, particularly for those municipalities on the $25 in your collection rather than $50, but occasionally to some small degree at the other level, we would invoice at the county for the difference. And so we have, we use Eden Financial Accounting Software. You'll be able to, you could ask for records whenever you're curious, whether it's a detailed summary with every single transaction or just a broad level summary. So you could, you know, dig into those if there was any questions. We have a pretty thorough process and we even make sure the descriptions are such that we can sort them out so that it's easy to pull out what, you know, all the household hazardous waste charges, all the curbside charges. So we can sort those out. But the, any municipality is responsible for any difference.
Okay.
So what services does the $50 or the $25 cover? Curbside or drop site is something that is required through the county program. And that was intentional, from my understanding, kind of historically in the design of the program, to make sure that everyone in a community had access to some form of recycling. So if your residents are currently paying directly, that means that if cost is a factor for them, they don't have the, they can't financially like bear that burden, even though it's at $20 a month, or they just don't feel like they want to. You know, they, they're able to sort of opt out. Whereas with the voter approved and through this program, we're tied in. We're making sure that they have that option. It's basically paid for if they voted it in. So it's a little bit more easier for them to get on board. So really, they're having to opt out, even though they're paying for it if it's voter approved, rather than having to opt in and decide, hey, I want to pay the extra $20 for this service. So curbside or drop site, so everyone has access to some level of recycling. There's optional depot site participation. So that's the difficult to recycle items like polystyrene appliances, tires and electronics. You could decide to participate that in that or not. That would be like Broken Arrow and Salem Township Transfer Station. We have a year-round household hazardous waste, battery and sharps drop off at the county health department. So residents could just call, you know, at the springtime or fall. They're cleaning up, they're maybe closing up the cottage or whatever the case may be. And they have those items. They can just make an appointment with us and bring them in. We have regional recycling events, three per year for household hazardous waste and electronics. We also host tire, scrap tire collection events. And we're looking at expanding the scrap tires to include ag tires as well. Get some of those larger tires cleaned up. It also includes a Resource Recovery Coordinator. So whether that's just communicating with vendors and haulers, your residents, event coordination and some of the things we touched on. I also provide annual and semi-annual reports as well as turn out of your finances. So it's available for them as well.
Okay.
So a little bit more about the events. Currently, we have three at the Hardings and Wayland, another at the Republic Collin, Republic Hamilton site, excuse me, and the city of Atzigo Department of Public Works. We will probably be looking to move the Republic of Hamilton event site. So certainly, if there were three communities in the area that were part of the program, it would make sense to, you know, potentially move that here. And then our current vendors, our drug and lab disposal for household hazardous waste in Valley City for our electronics.
Very good. Okay.
Yes, so we, the Yaling County Boarding Commissioners determined that they were going to collect this residential properties only and for residents only. And the reason for that is just that sometimes recycling for businesses can get quite expensive. It can be at large volumes. And we don't necessarily want to put that on the back of our residents. You know, businesses are making an income, so we would kind of expect them to act responsibly. But I do get calls from businesses and I try to help direct them to, you know, where they can go for those services if they're available.
Okay.
So some other types of interlocal agreements. There are many, but one that our program has set up currently is with Overaisle Township. And Overaisle, they contract with us for household hazardous waste services. So at our permanent facility and event participation services only. And what that kind of looks like is that they pay a per-household rate annually for coordination services. So and have a flat admin service based on their household count and then usage. So if their residents come to events, we record that. And then we pay that portion of the bill and then we just send Overaisle an invoice for that amount and they reimburse us. And so it changes from year to year depending on, you know, how much the residents are using the service.
Okay.
So what sold the 18 municipalities participating in this program? So that question definitely kind of predates me being in this position. The program dates back to the early 90s. But from what I could gather, talking to individuals about what kind of sparked this program coming together was that it was not only to offset the cost of providing recycling services to residents as recycling became increasingly, you know, desirable attribute for community. It also was intended to divert materials away from nearby landfills. So diverting materials from landfills extends the longevity of that landfill by extending their or maintaining their disposal capacity. Why is that important? Because we don't want a landfill built nearby. So if we can send our waste somewhere else because we preserve that capacity, we don't have to worry about a landfill trying to sit in our backyard. So a few more facts about the program. We have 12 out of 18 participating municipalities participating in curbside recycling services. 14 of the 18 have drop-off site recycling services. So like a container for their residents to drive to and drop recycling off. 13 of the 18 participate in the regional recycling depot sites. So those are those difficult to recycle items. And one participates for household hazardous waste and events.
So originally, how this started is the, the offer from the county has been, you can go on ahead and consider placing a $50 surcharge on your ballot in November. And then your residents, if they approved it, that would then be coordinated out of the county rather than through Republic in a contract that we have right now. So if, right, in August, sorry, August. The other option, if a municipality didn't feel that that $50 surcharge would pass, we actually have the opportunity to consider a $25 charge, which we would pass through a referendum through city council. And then residents could opt out if they wanted. And so we have a couple of options for us to consider at some point when it comes to recycling. And I'll, I'll bring that back to council to chat about. I'll try to summarize it as best I can because this is, the more we recycle, the better because we're not putting as much trash in the landfill. And that's where we're heading, so.
Can you do both? Can you do a combo where you still retain a single trash hauler? But what I'm getting at is, and maybe I missed something in the presentation. Maybe this can come out later, of course.
That's a good question.
But you go, I can foresee going into the $50 surcharge, right? And then, or maybe even the $25 surcharge, but you would open it up to multiple trash haulers. So one of the, yes, and one of the reasons why you went to a single trash hauler, so you didn't have so many vehicles running around. At different times of the day, different pickup period, no coordination between them, et cetera, et cetera.
Even can still maintain that through ordinance. So your ordinance might have to be modified for it to be a single waste hauler rather than a single recycle, just waste and recycling hauler. So you could, from my understanding, maintain that ordinance for a single waste hauler. So it's taller. Being that Republic is the only recycling hauler, it would be very unlikely for you to have another hauler, you know, try and get into collecting recycling. And then we could, you know, potentially look at building that language into whatever your ordinance is, that they are the recycling hauler. It's just essentially the way they're invoiced and paid. Would change.
Can I, just so that I'm following, this is called the Resource, called the Resource Recovery Program. And it's operated through the county and it would be a voter-approved, single hauler.
Recycling.
Recycling.
Voter-approved.
Program.
Recycling, yeah.
And it said that it's not a citizen surcharge. The payment to the county comes out of the general fund. Is that correct?
So the surcharge could go on the ballot if the voters approved it. It would go on residential property taxes. When those property taxes are paid and the city collected that surcharge, they would send it to the treasurer, the county treasurer. And then that would be deposited into an account for the city to use for recycling purposes as outlined by the state statutes. If expenditures exceed revenues, that's when you would essentially receive an invoice for the difference because the city would be using recycling services residence. The county's not paying any, any difference. Is that?
Yeah, how often have you had to do that? How often have you had to go back to municipality and say, you owe us more?
So I, I believe recycling has gotten, I mean.
Very popular.
It's been gotten popular. So the more residents use the service, the more it costs. So like household hazardous waste is weighed by the pound. So more residents getting rid of their household hazardous waste, the more it'll cost. So that does, you know, increase costs over time. I believe this past year, I invoiced one in October, like three in November, I think six or seven in December. Yeah. And then various amounts, like honestly, almost everyone that collects $25 per household is essentially, yeah. But depending on your waste hauler agreement, that's really where, let's see, high expenditures, depending on how that's structured.
All right. Very good. Go ahead.
Rosemary, thanks for being here today. Appreciate hearing about the program. Two questions. One is, would we talk about the billing aspect of this? If the city were to, if the residents were to pass a referendum, the surcharge would be billed directly to them by the city? Or is that done through your program? How does that, how does that work?
Really great question. So it would be placed on winter property taxes. So it would go through whatever system you're using for assessing. They're familiar and they work with other municipalities, be able to apply that. And we have a household kind of definition because it doesn't necessarily apply to like vacant land or if there's just a structure that like a pole barn or something and it's not applied. And so we have that kind of defined in the SNA. I'm aware of that. The software they're using.
So it would appear on the property, thank you for answering the question. So it'd appear on the winter property tax bill. And this is not an opt-out option. So it's an additional $50, example, $50. Okay.
Yeah.
So the city wouldn't have any, other than the normal tax collections, wouldn't have an additional operation responsibility. It would be part of the normal.
Yeah, the normal tax collection process.
Yeah.
Yeah, the treasurer kind of takes over, I think, yeah, in February to resolve any, yeah, differences.
No, we would, yeah. The city wouldn't have to pay up anymore.
All right. Second, the second question is regarding the city participation program. If the city were to consider replacing the current garbage cans with recyclable garbage cans, which you see in many communities, would the city be able to participate in this program? Or is that a completely different, because you said that businesses were not allowed to participate? Does that include municipalities?
So like, like this building or do you mean like in parks?
Just out in the parks where we normally have garbage cans today.
Yeah, we haven't done anything like that. But that would potentially suffice the requirement for drop site access. So even if you stuck with your current structure for curbside and didn't change that, didn't change your hauler agreement, that would suffice having an access point for anyone by having drop site access essentially, you know, throughout the community. We haven't done it that way because unfortunately, sometimes having bins out that aren't monitored, you know, people just throw.
Yeah.
So that's a challenge. But you know your community, whether the citizens feel responsible, if there's a reporting mechanism. I just had an email this week from a municipality, hey, Republic spotted kitty litter and a container. Can you send them a contamination letter? And so, you know, we do kind of work through that as well to try and, you know, contamination if that occurs.
Senator, I may have missed it, but could you help explain exactly how this would work with those of us who contract directly with Republic for pickup, like in condo properties and so on?
Are you contracting with a car or you have like a container?
We have dumpsters.
Dumpster. So we can work with Republic to incorporate that into an agreement. Again, we run into contamination when containers are just sort of open to more than one household. So that is something many municipalities kind of shy away from. But it's an option to be able to incorporate, whether it's the Herbie Hoby at the end of the driveway or a larger recycling dumpster size. Essentially, you would move from paying an invoice or however you're paying for that now, if there's an association for your rent or I don't, to paying for it on your property taxes. And then that invoice, everyone in the city would be a part of a single account rather than multiple accounts. And then that one invoice would come to the county and we would, you know, make sure it was accurate and then process.
So then our management company would no longer be, we'd no longer pay for that service through our management company as we do now. I'm sure there are other properties like ours in Sagittuck like that.
Yes, but just before recycling that trash.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Can I'm available if you think of anything else? Just shoot me an email. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thanks, Rosemary. Very good. All right. Our next guest speaker, Healy Dunham Atkins.
Yeah, I'll tee this one up. But, you know, first again, Rosemary, I know you've been very, very busy with everything related to COVID. And now that seems to be slowing down a little bit, I'm glad that you can get to other work. And we appreciate you have, having you here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So yeah, we have Healy here and she's going to be talking to us about the hemlock woolly adelge. What? What's I? Which I even spelled out phonetically and I still can't get it right. So I just call it the woolly mammoth bug, which has been attacking the hemlock trees in the area. And so since I've arrived, I've heard from numerous stakeholders about the concern with the hemlock trees that are in our parks and the infestation of the HWA bug. And so I've just been asking all of the stakeholders, whether they're private property owners and/or coming, coming from a, from a public sector viewpoint, just to be very patient by we kind of reform our strategy when it comes to invasive species. And I've been in touch with the state agency. I know that they've had a little bit of turnover. So Healy is with the Michigan, is it now the Michigan Conservation Network? I think.
Yes, so we are part of the Michigan Conservation Network, yes.
Okay.
So I'm from the West Michigan CISM. I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I'm done. Go ahead.
I'm just super excited to be here. So my name is Healy. I'm the West Michigan CISM coordinator. So we run out of the Ottawa Conservation District. Okay, so I wanted to talk to you guys about what a CISM is before we get started. So CISM is a cooperative invasive species management area. So the West Michigan CISM covers those seven counties that you see on the right. So Allen County is one of our counties. CSMAs are just partnerships of local organizations, agencies, businesses that work together to address invasive species in their service area. So every county in Michigan is covered under specific CISM. Okay, so hemlock woolly adelge. So on the right, that is what hemlock woolly adelge looks like. It's really, really tiny insect. You can't really see it. What you are seeing is the ovisac that it produces. So the ovisac is this waxy woolly material that helps the bug protect itself from the elements. So that's the white material that you're actually seeing. So hemlock woolly adelge was first introduced to the United, Eastern United States in the 1950s. There are over 170 million hemlocks here in Michigan that are at risk of being infected with HWA. So it can take, it only takes four to 10 years after the initial infestation for hemlock woolly adelge to cause mortality on that tree. So the highest chance of spread for HWA is between April and August. And this is the life cycle stage that we call the crawler stage. So this is the only time of year where HWA can actually move. It's spread by birds, mammals, wind and humans. It's spread by birds, mammals, wind and humans. So on the bottom right, you're looking at a photo from the Appalachian region. Um, so like I said, it's, HWA has been in the Eastern United States since, since the nineteen fifties. It's only been here in Michigan since about twenty sixteen in West Michigan. So it's still a pretty new forest pest. Um, so we are able to kind of look at what other states are doing to, you know, kind of manage HWA and learn from those, um, managers. So, um, hemlocks are important for so many reasons. Um, but to keep it short, they provide microclimates, they regulate stream temperatures. They really love critical dune areas. So they kind of hug the critical dune areas, um, and they're holding those dunes up. They help with erosion control and there are several species that are dependent on this, on hemlock. So, um, we kind of, I wanted to kind of give you a timeline of what our, um, process will look like. So we have already went out and quoted the parcel that we are, um, here today about. Um, so I believe that was quoted last year. So once the quote was agreed on, we have the landowner agreement signed and returned. Um, I just got a call right before, um, the meeting today. My supervisor called me to let me know that she had reached out to our insurance, um, to see how we can move forward with that. Cause I knew there was some language that we needed to change in there. So once that's signed, um, the HWA crew will be able to begin surveying the property. So that will include tagging all of the hemlocks on this property and collecting data on each of those hemlocks. So once we collect all of our data, um, we will return during the growing season, which is May through October. And if there's a better time during that timeframe, we can schedule that as well, um, to actually do those treatments. So, um, kind of an overview of what that will look like. So we have two different treatment methods that we use. Both of them will be used, um, we will use a medical bridge for both of those, um, methods. The first one is trees that are over five inches diameter at breast height will be injected. So that chemical will go right up into that tree. Trees that are under five inches at diameter at breast height will receive a basal bark application. So we will apply that, um, a medical bridge just to the bark of that tree. So once we, um, apply this chemical, it takes about twelve to eighteen months before the chemical can breach that tree's canopy. And that's when we will start to see the control. Once you have that control, it will be the, the tree will be protected for about five to seven years from HWA. So, um, the photo on the right there, I think is a really interesting photo. It was taken last summer. This is in Oceana County. Um, we had treated this property in twenty nineteen. On the left, on the right, we never received permission to treat that property. So you can see that the trees are already, um, declining in health. You can see that the color on the left is richer, deeper. So, um, that's kind of just an overview of what the process will look like, what we will be doing out on the city's property. Um, I didn't know if we would have time for questions. So if there's any questions.
So what, where, where are we looking? Like all up in here, up on the other side of the river?
So it's, it's the property that's just north of the Oxbow campus.
Ah, okay.
The Crow's Nest Trail area, Talmadge Woods.
Okay. Wow. You're gonna like all those trees?
Yeah. So since, yeah, since twenty nineteen, we have treated over seventy thousand trees in West Michigan.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to touch on this, uh, on the agenda a little bit. Right there.
Very good question. Uh, Keely, thanks for being here today. So are you working with the Luddington State Park folks on their treating? That's where I first learned about this. The, the park ranger talked extensively about this pest. So.
Yeah. So, um, we, I have colleagues with the, the individuals that are working in Luddington. So Luddington, so, um, state parks, they're treating their own parks. So we kind of fill the hole of trying to treat, we mostly treat private property. So we try to focus on those properties or properties that are owned by private entities. Or, um, properties that just aren't being covered by the state. So that's kind of where we're trying to, um, make sure that we're addressing those.
So from a community standpoint, Talmadge Woods obviously is heavily populated with hemlock trees. So there are other hemlock trees within the city municipality boundaries that might potentially be treated as well that you have either identified or not identified?
So I have only, I only have information for that property that's north of Oxbow. And the two properties that are owned by Oxbow. But I do know, um, if, if that's something that you all are interested in, then we can absolutely have that conversation.
And, uh, just, just to reiterate, that was sort of leading into my question is if there are residents that are interested. In, um, private property, they can reach out to you. That's a service that you can provide.
Yes. So we do have grant funds, um, but unfortunately we are trying to spend most of our grant funds and our resources. In the northernmost extent of each, of the HWA population here in Michigan. We're trying to prevent, um, HWA from going into the UP where the hemlock resource is much greater. So our job is to kind of focus on that northern extent. But we do realize that there are, um, properties here in the southern area that aren't being addressed. So to, um, kind of get around that, we have created this program to charge the landowner at cost. So if there are landowners in, interested in this treatment, um, we do have a waitlist at this point for the treatments.
Great. Thank you.
Question. Great. All right. Very good. Good?
Thank you.
I know. All right. Very good. Um, we're at public comment on any agenda item only. If anybody is with us that would like to offer some public comments on any agenda item, please raise your hand. Introduce yourself and please limit your comments to three minutes. Go ahead. Come on up. Hi there.
My name is Claire. I work at Oxbow as the campus director. So I've actually prepared a little timeline of our HWA journey if I may introduce that to you all. But I, you know, won't take up too much of your time. I can sort of let all of this.
Thank you.
Why this is so important to us.
Thank you.
Um, so yes, thank you so much, Keely, for going over HWA. And this is something that I've learned a lot about over the past couple of years. A longtime neighbor and friend to Oxbow, Case Molly, um, basically contacted me in April of twenty twenty. To let me know about the plight of HWA in the region. And, you know, it's really a very great region. Um, and she encouraged me at that time to put together a group of our staff to go out and look for evidence of infestation in the Talmadge Woods. Which we did. And unfortunately we did find some evidence at that point. Um, so we marked trees, we got in touch with, um, our colleagues at the West Michigan Land Conservancy. Um, and the Michigan Association of Conservation Districts. And, you know, basically, uh, became in touch with, uh, Keely's predecessor, Drew Rayner. Drew had a crew come out to do an initial survey of the Talmadge Woods, which is about, I mean, I. I, I'm sure you're all familiar, but it's about a hundred acres of woods. And, um, you know, as, uh, Russ mentioned, there are many, many hemlocks. Like it is hugely composed of hemlocks. They're a crucial part of the ecosystem. And they did an initial survey that could provide a quote basically for what the comprehensive survey. And then the treatment stages would cost. So then, you know, time kind of going on, then began to, you know, communicate with Keely about this. And express Oxbow's desire to really move forward with the full survey and treatment. Um, and that kind of brings us up to the present and recent conversations. Um, the second page here kind of spells out the initial quote for what this mitigation process will cost. And, um, you know, there are two, as you'll see here, there are two smaller land parcels that are completely owned by Oxbow. And then the Talmadge Woods is held under a land conservancy agreement, like an easement between Oxbow and the city of Sagatuck. So we, you know, currently have, uh, basically, you know, on this, this final quote for that Talmadge Woods, uh, parcel. We're looking at thirty two thousand five hundred. Um, Oxbow has. Ten thousand dollars from an endowed, uh, our Norton Environmental Fund dedicated to that for twenty twenty two. And then basically we have set as fundraising goals the remainder of that. So, you know, looking for potential support and contributions from the city, um, as that is land that we steward together. And, um, you know, really looking to move forward on this ASAP. I know that, you know, Keely has been really wonderful about keeping us at the top of that waitlist. Um, as this is a really pervasive issue and, you know, we've been leading up to it for almost two years now. So thank you all.
Thank you. That's very good. Any other public comments? I see a Phil R. has his hand up.
Hi there. Uh, Phil Rothermack on Singapore and Sagatuck. I just wanted to point out on this HWA issue, the road to Oval Beach obviously is packed with hemlocks as well. And I don't know if that's private property or how much of it the city owns. But I would think that would be a significant concern too, if all those trees started dying. So that should be on the radar screen.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk? Kristen.
This is not about me. Um, I, Kristen Armstrong, Stocked Duck Center for the Arts. I wonder if under the recycling program, there's any conversation about a better recycling program for businesses, small businesses? Cause holy smokes, the SDA is unbelievably limited in what, in terms of what we can recycle because of we're down to once a month. And we would literally take up like half the parking lot with all the bins we would need. And so it forced us to have to make choices. Like we can only, now all we're doing is cardboard. No glass, no paper, nothing else, only cardboard. Everything else constantly gets thrown away, which is so disappointing. Cause customers always say to us, no, but I want to recycle. And we're like, I know you do. And we have no means of keeping it because it's once a month pickup. So, um, I've talked to other small business owners too, who were sort of startled that there basically is no provision. It's like a one size fits all. It's great for, um, people's homes, but holy smoke, it does not work for small businesses, which just makes us feel badly. So I think there would be interest if people, if there was a different, if there was another means, I think you'd have a lot of business interest. And we'd be at the front of the pack saying, let us help you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Go ahead. Come back up.
I will just quickly second that. Um, you know, I'd like to second that emotion. On the, on behalf of Oxbow, um, we are in very much the same situation currently of recycling cardboard and being very limited otherwise. Um, managing our own returnables, you know, for outside, at outside sources. Which is quite a bit of labor and it is what it is. But, um, we would also be very interested in being involved in that conversation going forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else online? See anybody? Kate?
Madam Mayor, I, I have a comment and I'll include this in my city manager report. But I just want to acknowledge, um, how great this agenda is because I think it really encapsulates Sagatuck. I mean, if you look at it, we have, um, recycling and sustainability.
Yeah.
Uh, environmental stewardship through invasive species treatment, uh, public arts. Blue Star Trail, health and sustainability. So again, I just think this is totally Sagatuck and I just want to acknowledge that. Again, I'll put that in my city manager's report.
That's great. Thank you.
Don't forget to include the renewal of the licenses, which is the backbone of the boardwalk along the river.
Yeah, you're here. Good point. Thank you.
Water, water. Great. All right. Very good. With that, we'll move to discussion items and I'll turn it over to you. Back to the HWA, cause I'm not even going to try to say it.
Just say the woolly mammoth bug. All right. So this is on page two of your agenda. We had a presentation. Thanks again, Keely, for, for coming and, and doing that. Uh, as mentioned, uh, we do have the HWA bug. It's present in the city of Sagatuck surrounding areas, uh, township. In other regions, state parks included. So, uh, city staff had received numerous requests, as I mentioned earlier, from stakeholders to begin treating hemlocks on public grounds. And then providing education and resources for private property owners to do the same. So, you know, city staff was recently contacted by Oxbow. With a request to be a co-grantor for the survey and treatment of the Talmadge Woods area. The request contains two components, a financial ask. And permission to allow contractors to access the property for surveying and, and treatment. So the financial ask initially was, um, at twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Roughly a third of the total costs. However, um, city staff has concerns about our public bid threshold. So I did respond and say, hey, um, I'm sure council may be interested in doing twelve five. But however, um, there's a concern with our bid threshold. So, um, I responded that the ask would be more appropriate at under ten thousand, so nine thousand five hundred. Oxbow seems super appreciative of any contribution. So the response was, um, favorable to, when I responded with the nine five. The property access agreement, we've sent that off to our attorneys. There's, um, a few issues. I think we can get through those with the conservation, uh, network being a governmental agency. As long as we have proof of insurance and they have, uh, good coverage, I, I think we can work through that. I would just recommend that council leave it to city staff to work through those types of details. Um, and just worth mentioning, Oxbow has demonstrated great environmental stewardship and leadership, you know, push, pushing this issue. And so I, I certainly support this.
Questions for council?
Yeah, I've got one, Mayor.
Yeah, go for it.
Ryan, does, does the nine and a half grand get us there? Does that get us to where we need to be to get it done or get it started this year?
I think so. Um, Claire's here. Um, the response that I got, you know, again, the initial ask was twelve five. I responded with the nine five. This, I said, that's, my takeaway was, that's great. Well, we'll take whatever we can get. And I think things would move along at the nine five. If that was, if that answers your question.
It does.
Claire, correct me if I'm wrong.
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor? Yes. Um, so I've assumed that the agreement will be corrected for the date. I noticed unless there's a reason for that February eleventh, twenty twenty two date.
It's always for that. Yeah, we'll correct the dates.
So if Oxbow is a co-grantor, um, why are they not listed as part of the agreement? I guess this could, the way that I read this is that it could be interpreted that. And Oxbow would never do this, but if they would step away from it, we'd be on, we'd be responsible for the entire thirty two five. The way that I'm seeing, if I'm not reading it correctly, I, please, please let me know. So.
Okay. So the, the landowner agreement comes through the conservation network, not through Oxbow.
Right.
Um, and you're asking whether they should be a party there too. We can work out that language, um, if that gives you some assurances that they will commit to the funds.
Yeah.
As you're concerned.
I, I'm a supportive project.
Sure, I understand.
But I want to make sure that there's not a additional financial risk for the residents.
Okay.
At least the way that I'm reading this. If I'm incorrect, then be happy to.
So basically you would add Oxbow to this, this agreement made whatever date between the Ottawa Conservation District. The village of the city of Sagatuck or the city of Sagatuck and Oxbow.
Yeah, I would include it. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
And larger question is, and Phil R. brought it up, is why, and he brings up a great point with Pyramid Road. Can you imagine how awful that road would look if this were to occur there?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I think we, we should, as long as we have expertise here. Maybe engage them to, to see what the extent of that problem is as well.
Yeah.
I, I would just, because you can't return from this if it, it's point of return.
Yeah. My, my question would be how much of that is private property up along Pyramid Road?
North side's all public, south side, dune ridge, right?
Combination.
So, yeah, we have to look at those property maps. And so the way I view this is, um, this is a wonderful first step.
Yeah.
Uh, cause we've done nothing to date, uh, and as far as I know, historically. So I, I would say let's create this relationship, begin this survey, um, begin the treatment. And then let's just kind of expand, um, from that, that, that bless you. That would be my, my take on it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah. Great. Other questions? Is, is ninety five hundred the magic number? Can we go to nine thousand?
You sure can.
I mean, that was, that was my question. It has, well, sorry, I'm just asking. It's not for me to decide. I mean, if ten thousand's that magic threshold, could we do as close to that as possible? And how does council feel about it?
Yeah, I think the magic number is ten thousand.
It is.
Nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'm always, I'm always concerned about incidentals, right? So like, there's always like this little five hundred dollar buffer. But that's just me being weird. So, I mean, we can go to nine, nine-five. I don't think we have a lot of exposure there, as long as we keep under that magical threshold of ten. We'll tee it up for council on Monday.
Yeah. Very good. All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for your comments. It's now when I hike out to Cozeness, I'll pay more attention. I haven't paid attention. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Next up, this person's been so patient. Special event application. Mr. Manager.
Okay, this is on page ten of your packet. Have to get through the HWA stuff. And so where we left off with the public art installation from SCA is that you want city, you wanted city staff to go out and meet with SCA and review the project, come back with any concerns. So city staff, we've done that. We met with Scott Herbert, myself, Kate was there. And you had your art installer, what would you call it?
Our artist, Jeremy Burnett, was there?
Yeah, he was there.
On a cold and snowy day.
It was very cold and very.
It was very brave.
So we had the meeting and so I'll just turn it over if that's okay with you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I, and I guess I would say too, that I want to make sure that what Ryan and Kate and everybody wanted was done too. I mean, because from our standpoint, we were like, this is great. But we wanted to make sure everybody else felt it was great. I think the other really crucial part was, oh my gosh, Ryan, her name, Kathy, Venetian Festival. Thank you, Kate. Nancy was there too for Venetian Festival. So it was cold and everybody, thank you for being out there. It was not a lovely day to be hiking through Coffin Park. But we literally walked, ran through the entire area with Jeremy. And so we were able to look at really specific things like, do, you know, do you mow the grass? Do we mow the grass? Who mows the grass? You know, we talked through all of that. We, I know Jeremy's got a request in which I think you guys are dealing with Kate for the Asbault plans for sprinkler heads, so we can make sure really, you know, thoughtful about where we're, we, you know, we said, we can move this around to get it in between, behind whatever we need it to be, no problem. And to me, the biggest takeaway was having Nancy there. Her concern was, gosh, how are we going to place the stage for Venetian Festival? And Jeremy said to her, do you want me to draw you a plan and literally drop the station so you can give it to your design team? And she said, oh my gosh, yes. So we left with Jeremy saying, you got it. I will send you a site map that you can just give to the team who comes and sets up your portable stage. So she left saying, oh, this was genius. And I'd never met Nancy, so it was just nice to make that connection too. That was really great. So it seemed from our sta, our perspective that key questions or concerns were able to be addressed, both us going back and saying, sure, we'll move this or that. Ultimately, Scott's like, yeah, don't, we don't want you mowing it. Never mind. Bad idea. We're going to, really? He's like, yeah, no, I'm going to do it. What we had said is if at some point in the summer, you guys are like, ugh, you know, I shouldn't have done this, then we will, we will take that on. And then the other bit was Venetian Fest. We talked to Kate about weddings and I think you felt comfortable, like, no, this is going to be okay. You know, we just, in terms of making sure there was no other stakeholder who would be using the space, who, when they rented the space, said, what do you mean, there's a huge red rowboat thing in my landscape here? So it felt like we were able to answer those questions. I, I guess I would go back to Ryan and Kate and say, was there anything else that you felt was important that we didn't get to or anything like that?
No, I think our, our concerns were with maintenance and we addressed those. And I, I think city staff is comfortable with, with what's happening. And personally speaking, you know, I'm very appreciative of the investment that SCA is willing to make in, in this public art installation.
Yeah. I think it'll be really cool. All right. Questions from council while we've got her. I appreciate you putting the due diligence into it.
Oh, of course.
That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Great.
Well, the fun news too is Fenville DDA approved it last night. Woo-hoo. So all five of, or seven of our locations spread across the four communities have been approved.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kristen, good to see you. Thanks for being here today.
Yeah, thanks for us.
Imagine the installations. I've heard from several people, there's one going across at the pump house as well.
Yeah.
That's not listed.
No, because that's on their property. And apparently there's a little bit that is city property.
It, it is, it is ours, actually.
It is city property.
Okay. So I guess I'll have to work with.
Because you were working with the history.
Yeah, History Center to make sure, oh gosh, one of their board members had been in touch with, I don't know.
John Kerr, maybe?
Yeah, it was John Kerr. Yes, who's been in touch. So I guess I'll have to go back to him and make sure we get, everything's taken care of that way. Okay.
Presumably, it's, it's a lot more modest in scope than.
Yes, it's, yeah, it is. It's, and it's almost all, well, okay, I guess I shouldn't say anything or I'll get myself in trouble. I guess, yeah, we, I knew that there was a, a small portion of it that was apparently on city property. And, you know, I'm sorry, my bad. John was like, I got this taken care of. Don't worry about it. And so I didn't, I didn't do anything about it in terms of going to city. So.
It's a whole different beast than Coffin Park.
Totally different.
I mean, it's totally different.
Yeah, it's a completely different installation. But I'm, you know, let me know what questions you have and I'm happy to share, obviously, share all of that information with you too.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Also too, in regards to any signage regarding the installation, has that been, I don't recall if we saw anything. Well, I'll make sure there's not going to be any zoning, zoning issues with sign placement, sign size and so forth within the park itself. So I don't even know if that's.
Oh, that's a great question. We would work, I'll work with Ryan to make sure that, I never even thought about sign size, that we're in compliance with size. And I know, Ryan, we were going to talk to you anyway, obviously, about where, where to best place that signage. We would not do that on our own. We would definitely, anyway, we might hit one of Scott's sprinkler heads and that would not be okay. No, I'm joking, not joking.
Last question is more of a concern. I've talked with several people about the installation, have described it and encouraged them to look at the packet. And the only thing that has come up as a concern is, I think you're going to encourage people to, or not maybe, not encourage is the right word, but you're not going to discourage people from climbing it. You're the kids, right? Is that correct?
Well, actually, we are discouraging people from climbing on it. There will definitely, on the signage, it will be very clear that we love you to picnic under it. Take selfies in front of it, you know, all that stuff, but please don't climb on it.
Yeah.
So I would just encourage appropriate signage to tell people that it's not.
Yeah. In fact, Fenville last night was like, could we have more signs that simply say, don't climb on it around it? And I said, absolutely. So.
And, you know, kid, I'd be all over this.
Yeah. And, you know, I will say though, and I think Kate and Ryan, once we were out there, we realized this, the piece is really almost in the swale, right? Like, it's like right along the edge of that. And so it's not that you can't get to it, but it is really in the rain garden part of it over there. I didn't even realize until we walked it with Jeremy. I mean, he's really got it skirting the edge of the property, which I hope will make it far less attractive to people too, because it's not toward the middle. It really is on the perimeter.
That's a big difference from the first rendering we saw.
I too thought that it was much more in the park. And then when we were walking it, I'm like, oh geebers, they're in the trench practically. So. Hope, but to your point, a ten-year-old is persistent and more signs is definitely are better.
Someone that's over a certain age might be encouraged.
Not naming names, Russ, but we're just saying.
Yeah. The last question before we proceed to the staff, assuming we're going to get signed out from Scott, fire department official signage on this forum, make sure that they approve this.
Not sure about the fire department, but for sure, city staff.
I just want to say how excited I am about this project. I love the design of it. I think it's really going to be just sort of that red on the green expanse is, is going to be visually really stunning. And I think there's always an issue when you have public art. It's always an issue, you know, it's something out of the ordinary. And, you know, we'll always have the issues of public interacting with that piece of art. So that, that's just part of, it's just part of how it works to have public art, living with public art.
Thanks. Well, part of our hope is that we can help blaze, not blaze a trail, but it's been a while since we've had an opportunity to do public art. So whatever we learn from this, all the better. We're super happy to be that beta testing partner. So.
Remind me of the other municipalities. So Fenville, Douglas.
It's going to be in Fenville downtown on Main Street, kind of where, right next to where there's the parking lot, Music in the Park, and then that open space right there at Crane's. So that's also in Fenville. Behind the building, you know, you go down the slope and there's kind of, we're going to be back there in the woods.
Nice.
In Holland, because Outdoor Discovery Center is in Holland. So we're at ODC on the art trail that they actually blazed for us to activate. We'll be on the big long one on the art trail. In Sagatuck, both at, I learned it's not called the pump house. It's called the History Museum, which I did not know. So I looked it up formally last night. Over there, Coffin Park SCA, which we view as one, and then Douglas Sways Bayou.
Yeah. Cool. Okay. Yeah. I think so. I can hardly wait.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thanks, everybody.
Any other questions from council? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very good.
I'm glad I heard the recycling thing. That was great.
Yeah. All right. Very good. Next up, approval for the submission of the MNRTF grant.
Madam Mayor, this is on page twenty-two of your, of your packet. We've talked about this in the past. We had a workshop just before this meeting. The motion that's going to be queued up for you on Monday is just going to be to approve the grant application.
Okay. Very good. So all of us were at that session at three o'clock. Any questions? Basically, it's a performative thing. Go ahead, Russ.
As I'm looking at the resolution itself, two of the items that have caught my attention is the whereas for city of Sagatuck is hereby making a financial commitment to the project through an amount of fifty thousand dollar matching funds. I believe that's already been done, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
It should be written as already made a financial contribution that is making, and then more of a wording issue. But then the last one, I'm, and again, help me understand what it's saying here. It says, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Sagatuck hereby authorize this mission of the M of Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant application for three hundred thousand dollars. No problem with that. And further resolves to make available a local match through financial commitment and donations of eight hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. So by passing this resolution, does that in essence commit us to the thirty-six hundred? And then if donations fall short, if commitments are not met, the city taxpayers are on.
So I can.
Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, well, it's, it's actually basically the seven hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred dollars plus the fifty thousand that the city's already, that adds up to eight hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. So basically, the friends have made the most substantial contribution in ninety-two thousand, seven hundred. That the most, majority of it would come from that tap grant. And then that's, that's how that adds up.
So you're, to my point is that if that tap grant comes in at something less than six eighty-seven, nine hundred, this resolution, how do we get the city residents to pay the difference? Or are we not there yet? I don't.
It doesn't, it does not.
No.
No. If, if the tap grant falls short, then we come back to the table and have another discussion.
Yeah.
And it is not this project overview part of the.
Oh, it is.
Part of the thing where it breaks down the city.
Yeah, exactly. The packet that we received earlier. Yeah.
Yeah, each, each community, the township is requesting three hundred thousand dollars. The city is requesting three hundred thousand dollars through this second grant. So the local match is just, it's the cumulative number that's already the match that's spelled out. So everything has been clearly assigned and we just have to wait. We'll start getting some responses in the next thirty to sixty days to know where we stand. But one of, one of the benefits to working with C two A E is that they've walked us through to know the right ratios to ask for, so that you can maximize your possibilities of funding and your success through the process.
Thanks, Holly. And again, I come in from a position of what are the different scenarios that may present itself to us?
I mean, it is a bit confusing. So couldn't you insert the language, further resolves to make available through the local, through a local financial commitment of fifty thousand dollars and donations of, you know, so it's clear what Sagatuck is contributing. I think that was what you were suggesting.
Yeah, exactly. Ken, thank you.
Yeah.
So it is, I mean, we can, we can work on clarifying it, but it is, I would say, in the one, two, third, whereas city of Sagatuck is hereby making a financial commitment to the project in the amount of fifty thousand in matching funds. So to your point, should any of these grants fail, or the state or the trust fund say, sorry, you're not going to get your full ask, then we come back to the table and say, okay, now we have a shortfall. What then happens? So you're not on, I think, to your point, like, you're not on the hook for any shortfalls that may come if you're not awarded the full grant or the grant in particular, and you come back to the table.
Yeah, right. Thanks. That's essentially where I'm going is, I don't think at the point where we can't commit other than our fifty thousand dollars, which is done. Beyond that, because we just don't know what the MTAP or what the tap grant or the other three hundred thousand dollars are going to come back. It could be, it's going to be less than, it's going to be less than that, I believe, based on my knowledge of grants. It's probably going to be less than that, but we don't know what.
That's, that's not necessarily the case. But I think, I, I think it's a bit premature. I think we should cross that bridge when we get there. But to your point, I don't think that this is.
Correct.
Holding us on the hook for hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And for the record, you're committing yourself to fifty grand, which has already been approved. And again, if, if, if the grant should fall short or you don't get a grant award, then you come back to the table. So your exposure right now is fifty K.
I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
All right. Pretty good. And thanks again for everybody's hard work on this. I really appreciate it. I know this is one of those other hoops that we have to jump through. So I appreciate everyone's time and the friends, I know, and their commitment has been fantastic in the committee. So thank you so much.
And we're noting letters of support, which you'll, you'll see in your packet, including your, your government representatives, Upton, Nesbit, and I think we're waiting on one more.
Working on Mary. Looking on her. Very good. All right. Any other questions? All right. Very good. Sure, Matt, we're at a resolution to extend the Advisory Tri-Community Recycling Ad-Hoc Committee.
You should.
Okay. Basically, our, we started in twenty twenty for a year and re-upped last year and really have continued to exist past December without really a resolution. So basically, the township has initiated it and we're basically saying, please renew us so that we actually are truly exist, at least on paper. Because the committee's still meeting and we're still planning projects and whatnot. So it's basically just renewing an amendment to that original resolution.
I think you've done a great job and I admire your fortitude to continue.
I know, and the business folks, I just have to hang my head.
I wish.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
We all hear it.
Speaking of fortitude, have your colleagues all agreed to re-up?
Yeah, but Linda made it very clear that she is done after the. Done after this.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, again, I'm going to echo Mr. Truster's comments. Fantastic job. It's so nice to have this program underway. Point that I noticed on here is that the resolution is going to be to reappoint the four individuals' name. But on page twenty-six, item number one, it says each of the three communities will be allowed to appoint up to three members.
Yeah. Yeah, I think last year we amended that. It was three to four. So.
So there's four?
Yeah, three to four. It was up to the municipality. So.
So ours is four then?
Yeah, ours is four. I think Douglas is four. And then the township is three.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, I just also want to commend you and the committee for doing this work. We all hear from businesses and constituents alike. It's a really important issue to people and you guys have just done a great job communicating and just sticking with it. So we're getting somewhere.
Just going back to the earlier conversation, I have not heard from a single constituent that thinks once a month is adequate.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate you sitting, sitting through Rosemary. I'm trying, I've been trying to coach her along to get that presentation to make some sense. And it's very, it's very hard. You know, for her, she lives with it every day and we've been involved with it for two years. But boy, you sit with kind of the regular constituent and you start getting lost between fifty dollars and twenty-five dollars and this and that. And, and I will, I have gotten it down on a piece of paper so I can show you literally in a picture what this looks like, our options. So. So, you know, frankly, where I'm at is our best bet would, I believe, is to go back to Republic and see if we can negotiate that second recycling pickup. If Jack is coming to her now, and this, this is business. I mean, he's starting to hear that, you know, we might be possibly entertaining this option. Well, this is business. They don't wanna lose our business. So even though Allen County would contract with them, he'd rather have that all-in-one contract, which, which is fine.
If I remember correctly, don't they owe us a household hazardous waste day?
They do not owe us house, they owe Douglas.
Oh.
They owe Douglas. That's a whole nother thing.
But that's something that could be raised, though, and the contract is something that-
Yeah, their Douglas contract expire, is done in November.
Right.
And so they're coming to the table armed and dangerous. So, yeah.
So if, if we, if we wanna talk more about that with them, they'll, they'll be primed for the conversation, because Douglas is now on them about it as well.
Yeah, and, and, you know, actually, without belaboring this too much, where the committee would like to get to is the three municipalities being together,
Yes.
marching in lockstep in a contract together. That rather than having three separate contracts out there, one expires this year, another expires the next year, this gives the township the opportunity to finally get a single hauler contract, which was a big brouhaha before. But when you look at the, yeah, when you look at the costs, that what the township residents alone will save with a single hauler, waste and recycling, it will, it's amazing how much they will save. But anyway, where we're getting is to really, we'd love to kind of force the issue and get us all-
Wonderful.
Because I'd love for somebody else other than Arkham Little Committee to do household hazardous waste day, because it's a big, it's a big risk. Okay, big, big lift. All right, very good. Uh, next one, municipal licenses. I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, we are. So this is page twenty-eight of your packet. Pretty important stuff, and thanks to Jamie for working on this. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kate for some of the cover pages that she submitted in the packet. I didn't mention that, sorry. Anyway, so this is an annual deal where we renewed the street end licenses. And so we have the CPI increase, which is part of the contract, and then we have an exhibit, which is the license itself. And I will say that the Butler Agreement is gonna take a little more time to work through, given everything going on with the transfer of property. The agreements were in the previous owners' names, so with the transfer of the new ownership, we're gonna have to pay a special attention to that, which staff is doing. But this will be on your agenda, just kind of your typical annual street end license agreement, and Mark mentioned it earlier. This, you know, this really is beneficial for the city and has been historically. And Mark, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want Mark to speak to this briefly or and or not.
Well, I think I, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be at the meeting Monday night, so the council and public won't hear my annual diatribe. Why these are, why these license agreements, which we can't call leases, which, you know, are in place and kind of the history of it. But I think, you know, you've heard me, you know, talk about it before, so, you know, it historically, it's, hasn't been easy to continue the leases through the years, but remain successful with it. And I personally, it's important, you know, I've always found this extremely critical, because I think other than maybe the Oval Beach and Mont Ballard area, the boardwalk is the second most critical, you know, infrastructure for our, our tourist business. I will make one, one note, and because it might, if, if, maybe everyone is aware or not, but there at the bottom, the final bottom, about the Cook Park lease, there you see a credit against that. I don't know if you're aware, but that credit is because Singapore Butler Enterprises slash Singapore Yacht Club now, the new owners of Butler, they actually maintain Cook Park. So they, we don't, the city does not invest anything into Cook Park. So they may, they, it, it's their sprinkling system. They took the water out of County River. That was all negotiated back when the seawall went in, and then it's, you went across city property. And so they cut it, they clean up the mess. So that's what that, that credit is for.
Got it.
And that is kind of, yeah.
Okay.
An offset, so to speak.
And it's also, also interesting and a fun fact that the city owns four docks, as I understand it, at the Singapore Yacht Club.
No, I think there's more than that.
Oh, all right. Getting more interesting.
No, oh, yeah, that's at Sarge's.
Sarge's.
You're talking down here, which is Singapore. It's about, it's either thirteen or fifteen boat slips.
Okay, wow.
It's not even more than that.
I didn't realize about, so what, so what happens if something happens to Singapore Yacht Club?
Well, the, 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 the contract is actually with Butler. And so, so Singapore Yacht Club is like a sub leasing to the, to the Butler.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I mean, it's a pretty dynamic situation.
My understanding is that there's a lot of nervous people in Singapore Yacht Club, but that they've negotiated a one-year kind of a loose agreement, but that
And that's why-
A lot of different things could be happening after.
Got it. Ah-ha.
But we're, it really doesn't affect, I don't think, Cook Park, because regardless of, I think, which way Butler Group ends up going, they still need that as a critical part of any type of a yacht club or a marina-related operation. So I think we're still in, plus, we've already negotiated with them. Of course, we don't know, right, that the agreement with the Butler that we-
Redwater Group?
The Redwater Group, we agreed to, is really just for this year.
Correct.
Yeah, so that'll have to be part of anything going forward. But they, I think they understand. We got a certain amount of clout when it comes to that, because it's not just, it's just not the Cook Park portion of these agree, you know, agreements that are critical. It's the south half of Mason Street and the west side of Butler Street, and that are critically important to their operation from boating, you know, from a boating standpoint. The one at the end of Mason Street is the largest slip available in the community. They can put up to under twenty or hundred and forty foot boat there. As you can see, there is a huge yacht there now. So, I mean, there's a certain amount of, I think, I don't wanna say clout, but leverage we have, regardless of how the, to maintain the yacht club.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, first of all, I mean, I totally agree with what Mark's saying, that this is like a critical part of the community, you know, the, the riverwalk, and to be able to provide access to the lake and the river. And I still, I never considered it a diatribe. I really enjoyed last year's, last year, last year's, I guess. I'm still actually trying to understand it, and I guess what I'm trying to understand still is, 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 are we fully utilizing the opportunity here for, for the community, you know, in our long-term strategy for, you know, for, for making sure people can access what makes this town so great, which is the water. And I don't, I mean, and I certainly support this on Monday, I'm just wondering if, do we need to do a piece of work for next year, making sure that all these leases are actually being used, not only be appro, not only appropriately, but to their, to their best effect? You know, I mean, are, are the leases really, you know, generating the right amount of business and generate, and, you know, is it accessible to people? You know, we've talked about how great it would be if we could have another dinghy dock, or if there was a place where people could, you know, a lot of people now, in addition to their bikes, now they bring their kayaks, and they bring their paddle boards. And just to find a way to really make sure that we are really, just like the pop-up patios, that we're, you know, this stuff is really being leveraged to its maximal benefit for not only, not only the business people, but for the residents and also the people that visit the community.
Yeah, I would be very, very careful.
Well, that's why I'm asking-
Trying to, you know, because they are allowing access just not to the public property, but to the private property, which is the real key element of the, of the riverwalk or the boardwalk. We have had these, plenty of discussions over the years about this, about, well, why not the city just, why can't the public just use those for boats, private boat slips, or why can't you put that into, well, because the private property owners are gonna say, you know, what is it then for me then, opening up to the liability I have to allow the public to walk? Now, some of them just say, well, you get, you know, my John's is great, you got your bar there, yeah. But that may not be this, that might be okay with Mike, but it might not be okay for Singapore Yacht Club or the Butler, you know, I mean, or Sarge's Marine down there. So I, I think you gotta give us something to get something. And, and so, you know, I would say, I, I, I think we have other areas that can be looked at.
Oh, you don't wanna give away the, the house.
You know.
You know, we are, you just said, we're in a, actually-
Yeah, no, no. If, if council in the future wants to look at the rate itself, okay, versus what, you know, what the, the property owner may be getting, because over the years, they were considered somewhat low, but you have to remember this, with the exception of only a few of the street ends, they put a sizable investment into those street ends. They paid for the maintenance. They paid for putting in this, this steel sheet walls, which is very, it's, it's quite an expense. So there was no, the city has no expenditures at all at the end of the, the, the street end. Now, some of them having maybe kept things up as well as others. That's worth maybe looking at.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm not advocating, you know.
Yeah, right. I just, so, but a lot of people don't realize that they paid for the seat, seat walls, and they paid for the docks.
When was that? When was that work?
They're all kind of different. A lot of it was to do with the high water back in the eighties, but then a lot of them was for like development when newer ownership came in.
Okay.
You know, so around Bayside Inn, you know, Bayside is, they had to actually raise those buildings up because of the last water. And so that was coordinated with the, with the ship and shore, and then the well around there, the Francis Street was all put into one seawall, one level, which is important for flood control, actually, is what's really critical. So I, it, it, it's, it's staggered, okay, depending on maybe when there was, maybe related to construction by an adjoining property owner.
So.
But they've, they've probably up, would be hard to think that they haven't recovered their
Right.
investment at that time period.
Yeah.
And with the cost of, the cost of, uh, dockage now increasing, maybe it's time to look at some other, you know, revenue range, and maybe a percentage or something like that. You wanna keep things, you know, for us, the key was, we always try to keep things consistent and uniform, you know, in, you know, some type of equity. But I think, I don't know about access for the public to use those areas, you know, I, I, but I meant the water portion of it. But I think for the city to look at it for a fair return, you know, is probably worth maybe considering, maybe a step basis or something like that.
Probably be wise to do a cost analysis, what was, what was paid in the past, where, if that's caused-
Yeah, I mean, that CPI was, that CPI is higher this year, and that's, you know, obviously.
What were you gonna say?
Reason why.
Sorry.
No, no, I, I, and I don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not just looking to just jack, jack the rates and just say, you know, you know, that, that's, that's the main objective. I think for me, it's to make sure everybody's on the same page on how important this riverwalk is, and how it's important for us to have, you know, some kind of uniformity, some kind of standards, and then, and then where there are opportunities, you know, that, that some of these, these holders may not be considering, you know, there may be an opportunity to do something that is actually beneficial to them, but they may, they may have just been kind of just going along with this, you know, this for years.
Yeah, I think the cash, the, their profit is what's gonna keep them. Those boat, those large boat ship slips are worth a lot of money. You think, what are we getting for our little twenty-four foot slips? Not three grand, close to grand, thirty-four on, twenty-four, twenty-two, something like that? I gave Peter my check this afternoon.
Yeah, it's big money, I mean.
Yeah, so you can put a twenty footer there. What, what should you get if you put a hundred footer over there?
Oh, my gosh.
My times, you know, but-
I would imagine our attorneys are gonna be-
It's begun.
It's a discussion. It, it's a discussion they have to bring that in, as you say, you have time for the price broker to go up so soon.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, just to-
Yeah.
Tag along with Mark's comments, yeah. These have been a topic of discussion ever since I can remember, and it's obviously in our critical interest to make sure that the public is able to utilize that space on the street ends. Now, the question I have, though, is where does the city end and where does the lease begin? So if you think about the end of Mason Street, so is it-
I think it states, it states in the agreement, I think it's fourteen feet from-
Is it fourteen feet, okay.
Over fourteen feet from the seawall, I think, or from the, now, there is no seawall there.
Right, right. Actually, there's all civilians.
You know, underneath there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the reason I'm asking this question is because item number ten in the agreement maintenance, I see where there are places in town where the street ends are not being maintained.
Yeah.
And I-
I guess, you know, that's part of, to an degree.
That's something that we don't necessarily need to discuss today, but I think in terms of overall look at the city, I think that's something we probably need to get talking about to make sure that there's a clear demarcation on.
Can I add something else that I think is, and it's something that I would urge Ryan to have in, not secrecy, but with discussions with attorneys, is the fact that there is some, and this led to us changing the wording on these agreements, because there is some court ruling stating that in a, it, it, it was, I think it was more for inland lakes, that these public right-of-ways could not be utilized, but nothing but public use, that it was limited to that. And so that, that led to discussions with, oh, what do we have, and how do we, we go about it, and are we circumventing the, the existing law? Now, this, I'm sure your attorneys have run into that, as, you know, I think our group is, because they're pretty wide, you know, experienced municipal law. But that's something, and the point is, you don't wanna blow this thing up and make it a big value, and someone jumps on that, walks in, and here comes Gary Medler saying, hey, you guys, violations are all illegal. I'm gonna take you to court and get rid of them. Boom, where does it, where does your boardwalk go then? So I think that's something you gotta be, maybe stick in the back of your, your mind when you're visiting these things, too, and have that talk with the attorneys. I, we had that talk, maybe Russ was after or before Russ was there. I don't know if you recall that or not. I think you, are you familiar with that, that act? It was a lawsuit, I think, actually, it's a Michigan Spring Court, about the use of street ends. I, it started with, it had nothing to do with rivers, and I think it was more inland lakes, and there was a big hullabaloo about that. Just kind of followed by how, you know, the access to, to the beach, too, that, that was just, we're about the same time, I think. So the public access issue for waterfronts always is a big thing in Michigan. And this came after what we were, what we had agreements we got. So I think Slugger and his group, when they put this together, were very careful in how they worded these contracts, too, was to kind of, I don't wanna say do an end run, but let's say, try to make an exception or a legal exception to, just something I think Ryan and that's why I wonder, is I, you know, you just kind of let these through and not try to make them look a little bit more routine, but, but with what's coming up with these five-year agreements might be part of the dialogue you have, but I certainly think that just negotiation with the rate, you know, is, is probably here.
Okay.
But just wait.
All right.
Sorry.
Anything else?
No, I, I would just say, this transfer of ownership from the Butler to the Redwater Group is certainly gonna trigger a lot of these discussions.
Yeah.
I think we'd all appreciate a cartoon to understand where our property's at
Yeah.
um, versus private property. And then, I, I mean, I would just make a blanket comment, I would say that the City of Sagatuck is probably in a very good space, and, and as far as, you know, what the attorneys would say is prescriptive rights, meaning that the public has utilized the boardwalk for
Oh, yeah.
generations, right?
Yeah.
Forty, fifty, sixty years, I don't know, along the boardwalk. generations, right? Forty, fifty, sixty years, I don't know, along the boardwalks has, has been there. But all, all of these discussions are going to be triggered by the transfer of the ownership of the Butler.
All right, very good. Okay, any other questions? All right, lastly, we have Board of Review alternate member appointments. I'll take this one. We had five individuals apply. Jamie did a great job of getting the word out and encouraging folks to apply for alternate positions, which we had approved. Five people applied. We interviewed three and that gave us the leeway to bring on two alternates. I think you see there Lynn Asmus is the first alternate, if you will, and Barb Lucier is the second alternate. And I think Lynn is going to step in right away here at this March, big March Board of Review meeting. Because one of the current Board of Review members has to be out of town. So, so this is where we're at, just approving their appointments expiring January the first, twenty twenty-five. Okay, pretty straightforward. It was great. I never knew that it was so popular to be on the Board of Review. Maybe it's the chair, Mr. Leo. It's a good problem. All right, with that, we're at public comment. I know we've got some people online yet. If we have anybody who'd like to offer a public comment on anything, please introduce yourself and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody online? We're down to two. Nope, she's shaking her head. All right, with that, council comments, we'll start with, oh wait, we've got correspondence. You've gotten all kinds of correspondence in your packet. I think there'll be quite a bit more coming related to the trail. It's wonderful to see, especially from Congressman Upton and Senator Nesbit. That was very nice. Yeah, very impressive. Council comments, Ken.
At this time, I would just ask maybe that the correspondence for the bike trail be passed along to Emily Meyerson at C two A.
Speaking from the right side of the house, is it possible to get a screen over here? Yeah, I thought we were, so I just wondered what the status.
Yeah, that's not too far off. We're going to have two TV screens. We're going to have one here, one there. And we're working with the electrician and we're probably, what, two weeks from completion? We can't commit to a timeline. So it's happening, yes.
I remember that being discussed and I just.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, sorry. It's coming. Yeah, it's coming. Thank you. There's been some supply chain issues.
Nothing today, thank you.
All right, very good. I appreciate everybody today. Thank you so much and we'll see you Monday. We'll miss Mark. All right, let's see, adjourn, we need a roll call.
Yes.
All right, very good.